I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome everyone. I am required to read this letter since this is a specially called meeting and it's to the members of the City Council in accordance with the Virginia Beach City Code, Section 2-21, and by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special formal session of the Virginia Beach City Council Tuesday, April 28th, 2015 at 6:00 PM, City Council Chamber 2401, Courthouse Drive. The purpose of the special formal session is to conduct a public hearing on the fiscal year 2015 through 2016 resource management plan. Due to the appreciation of real property, the fiscal year 2015-2016 operating budget as submitted to the City Council with the proposed real estate tax rate results in an effective increase in taxes of more than 1 percent. Therefore, Section 58.1-3321 of the Code of Virginia requires a public hearing by the City Council. We have scheduled this special formal session to provide citizens an opportunity to express their concerns on the proposed fiscal year 2015-2016 budget. And to all our speakers, we welcome you and we look forward to your presentations. We have 60 speakers lined up, and so that's quite a few. We'll be limited to three minutes, and we will adhere to that to be fair to everyone. So if we could go ahead and get started again, we're glad to have everyone here. Ruth, if you'd call, please.
I will call two names. Please abide by the first name will go to the podium, the second name will come forward so they'll be ready. That will save us a lot of time. Mona Saffirstein, Max Gamo.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry to be here because if you all were doing your job representing the people of Virginia Beach in the best way possible, I wouldn't have to come. I have several points to make. First, the real estate tax. For years, we've worked in groups among citizens to reduce the tax, and now you're slamming us with a huge increase. On the other hand, we're going to be losing a lot of people in this city. We have not brought in, as you had hoped to do, large industry that would bring high-paying jobs. That's been like a dream, no reality, nothing we can look forward to, or at least nothing that I'm aware of that you've brought forth that's pending. The likelihood is that we will lose a section of the military personnel who live in this city, and that has all kinds of ramifications in terms of the bottom line for the city. You lose people, there are less kids in the school, maybe you need less teachers. It's just a snowball effect. That's something you have to keep in mind. But the most important thing that you're considering that's very unpleasant for most of us to entertain is the light rail issue. First, there was a referendum that was very clear that many people came out to vote for and overwhelmingly opposed. Before that time period and the results came out, you called for another referendum. So you wasted our money. There should not have been a second one until the first one was completed. The wording was so inadequate that a lot of people didn't even know what they were voting for. The numbers on the tide are horrific, and that is after giving free passes to ODU students and Norfolk State students, and the bottom line is just incredible. If you study light rail, you know that it doesn't pay for itself anywhere, even in the places where it's considered very successful. So I entreat you not to go forward with light rail because in so doing, you deprive us of the funds that we pay to keep this a top-notch city. The police, the teachers, the firefighters, they haven't gotten a raise, or if they have gotten a raise, it's so minuscule that it would not even equate to the increase in the real estate tax that they're likely to receive if you proceed with this erroneous viewpoint in treating this citizens of this fair city. So since the yellow light is flashing, I will not continue to harass you with these points. I simply request that you examine your hearts very well before you vote positively for this budget because it is going to hurt a lot of us, and I say that as a senior citizen on a fixed income.
Thank you very much for coming down tonight, ma'am. Next speaker, please. We welcome you tonight.
And the next one, Craig Poppin.
Good evening, Mayor Sessoms, Vice Mayor Jones, and ladies and gentlemen of City Council. My name is Max Gonano, and I'm here to speak in support of a 5 percent pay raise for all city employees. I have lived in and worked for this city for the last nine years and have been here for some tough times. This city has invested a great deal on infrastructure for the future, but it has fallen behind on investing in the employees it takes to run this place. As employees, we have stood by the city while enduring increases in health care and retirement, coupled with salary increases that are inadequate to even address inflation, let alone progressing through our pay scale. This has culminated in a $42 million compression issue. It's $42 million that your employees should be bringing home and spending in this city and on their families but are not. As a result of this, many employees who have served this city for seven, eight, or even nine years make just a few dollars above the minimum salary for their position. Using myself as an example, a 5 percent raise would not even put me where the de facto minimum salary for my position was in 2008. In other words, I'll still be making less than everyone else did in my same position over seven years ago, and that is incredibly frustrating. 5 percent certainly does not fix the problem, but it does help. You received enough feedback to make total employee compensation the number one priority for this session. Now let's do something about it. Please support your employees. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please. We welcome you.
Craig Poppin and Don Krieger.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Craig Poppin. I'm speaking this evening on behalf of Virginia Beach Vision and its 120 members of the Board of Directors. Our mission is to create a vision and advance initiatives necessary for the city of Virginia Beach and this region, much like all you that are elected up here to do. Transportation, education, as that gentleman mentioned, are critical to this mission, and you guys are addressing both of these in this budget. The actions you take over the next few weeks are going to significantly impact the city's future, its character, its livability. You will choose whether the city moves forward with creating some infrastructure needs that are necessary for our kids and our grandchildren to attract businesses to this area, support biomedical research parks, both that are going to add diversity to our community and grow jobs, and help in the tourist industry. That's very important to this area and the education systems. That's been top-notch for years, and hopefully they will continue. It's an important juncture at this point for the city and the region. We feel that the light rail line is important to the growth of this city. That spine runs from Norfolk through the middle of the city down to Virginia Beach that can be expanded on into the future as the need arises. If we don't move forward on some of this infrastructure funding, we lose the $155 million that the state's been willing to put up. That's, as you guys know, is very hard to come by, with the pay $20 million back to the state for the right of ways. Right now, the interest rates are favorable towards funding some of the infrastructure. We applaud you guys in dealing with hard times where funding from the state, Fed budgets have been cut back. You've been very efficient, and the city staff's been very efficient in making improvements and dealing with that. But as we've all been told over the years, we're a cul-de-sac. We don't need to try to prove it. We need to make some improvements from an economic standpoint. I think the budget you guys are looking at achieves that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Don Krieger and Paul Merritt.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Thank you. My name is Don Krieger. I'm a lifelong resident of Virginia Beach, and I've made my living for the past 30 years in commercial real estate. So I'm very sensitive to how our region projects to other regions in the country in a competitive landscape and internationally, and it's very important, I believe, that we fund the next step with light rail and at least bring it to town center. Whether it goes further or not, it all depends on at least making this one three-mile linkage. The state has made it clear that they support this. The $155 million funding that's at stake is maybe the difference between this happening today and maybe not happening. And so I understand that there is a funding issue. You might support the alignment but won't have the funding approved until we have more details with respect to the pricing. But I think that if we don't fund this project as a part of this tonight and next week, that how can we do that without sending the wrong message to Richmond as it relates to that 155 million? It's the very reason that it's affordable. The citizenry has spoken out in the referendum two and a half years ago overwhelmingly, two-thirds in favor of taking the next steps as it relates to light rail. I think accepting the 155 million from the state and moving forward is the next step, and I think it's critical, and it's a visionary decision for the city and for the city's leadership. It's not about today. It's, as I wrote to you in my letter, it's about my children and grandchildren more than it is about me, but I'm also concerned about today, and I'm concerned about how we're projecting against the Charlottes and the Rollies of the world. We're behind, and we'll get further behind if we don't make good visionary decisions like this one. So I appreciate your attention, and thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Paul Merritt and Mike Merritt.
We welcome you tonight.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Paul Merritt. I'm a small business owner here in Virginia Beach. I've lived here now for 16 years, and I've had an opportunity to watch the city grow, and I've also been down here many, many years ago when I was a young high school student up in northern Virginia. I saw what was here then, and I see what's here now, and I see that 40 years ago, men and women who are sitting where you are made visionary decisions. And I think in this case, what I'm looking for is what's going to happen 40 years from now. And I think that when we think about our future, we think about our children, we think about our grandchildren, we want to keep them here in Virginia Beach. We don't want them going to DC or Charlotte for other jobs. We want to keep them here, and the lifestyle is very, very important. And so with that, I believe that light rail is one of those key components that will attract our younger generation to remain here and bring in good jobs. I recently traveled to Denver. I had to make a quick side trip. I went out of the city into the suburbs, got onto their light rail, and saw probably 80 percent of the riders were 30 and younger, and so I thought to myself, well, that's probably what we'll be looking at here. And when we go forward with light rail, I believe that we'll be speaking loudly to our future generation in the next 40 years. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Merritt, Arthur, please.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, I join with fellow members of Vision to urge you to adopt the budget as presented by Jim Spoor, our City Manager. I believe that this budget deals with the major strategic issues that are facing us as a community. First, the need to maintain the highest credit rating available. Thanks to you and to many former council members as well, we have earned the trust and the bond that the bondholders have to create the highest credit rating available. That's an amazing accomplishment. This is the foundation for a successful financial strategy, and it makes all other things possible. Second, we realize that long ago, new revenue was needed within the city to overcome cuts from the state and the federal government. The cuts in direct services for local government and to local government and public schools have been reduced by planning and action to ensure that we learned to create local funds that we can depend upon. That means that we have to create economic development strategies that overcome the cuts from other levels of government. Now, economic development then is our major issue. Three major projects that have been done in this city show why that's crucial. First of all, resort development. Since 1985, we have transformed a tired, sad, old industry to, sorry, John, to one of the, that now brings great financial rewards to all of us. Second, Princess Anne Commons, which provided land at a great cost to form the basis for medical, office, educational institutions, and yes, recreational needs as well. Third, town center, which created that sense of place we needed to live, work, and play within a new community. Now, how do we continue that in the future? For me, for Vision, for the bond rating agencies, light rail transit and transit-oriented development are the answer, the formula for us to continue our legacy of growth and development that allows us to fund our schools, public safety, human services, public works and utilities, and arts, recreation, and cultural services. It's investment that creates public wealth that kept us strong. Light rail and transit-oriented development will help keep it that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Please, says that door.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. It's nice to be with you. I'm Martha McLeese, and I speak tonight as a lifelong resident of Virginia Beach and as a city volunteer. I serve both on the Social Services Advisory Board as well as the Envision 2040 Vision to Action Community Coalition. I recognize that your task to adopt a city budget that meets the needs of citizens while minimizing our tax burden is particularly difficult this year. The recession brought a significant increase in demand for public services while decreasing real estate assessments and tax revenues necessary to finance those services. Concurrently, the state has reduced its funding support for education and local roads by $91 million annually. This is equivalent to more than 17 cents on the real estate tax rate. That's huge. Uniquely this year, you must decide if you will make the investments necessary for our city to diversify its economy or miss these one-time opportunities and allow the city to stagnate and accept whatever the future may bring. When you embraced the report of Envision Virginia Beach 2040, you chose a path of building a sustainable, progressive city. You adopted a comprehensive plan and created the strategic growth areas that are aligned with mixed-use urban-style development served by a multimodal transportation system. I support the proposed budget and the tax increases because I believe you are moving in the right direction. I am willing to invest my share in tax dollars to ensure we continue to have a city where citizens will live, work, and enjoy a high quality of life for the generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Ms. Fidula, Mary Mathena.
We welcome you tonight. Right over here.
On the other side, you have a microphone.
Thank you. There you go. We welcome you.
Well, my name is Ms. Fidula. I work at the Independence Center, and we would like to thank you for your partnership over the years. You have funded us every year for the last 35 years, and we sincerely appreciate that. We provide services to Virginia Beach residents with disabilities to remove barriers to living independently. For example, as a Virginia Beach resident myself, through working at the center, I learned about a home modification funding program. I was able to adapt my kitchen so that I can use my own kitchen, and I also was able to adapt my doors in my backyard. So before, people had to help me in and out, and now I can come and go and fully enjoy where I live. This is the philosophy of our center. The majority of our staff and board of directors are people with disabilities ourselves. So the information that we provide, the advocacy assistance and disability adjustment counseling, it comes from knowing the services and resources and information that has been important to us on a daily basis our whole lives. We understand firsthand what it takes to be independent, to work, to participate actively in our community. So far this fiscal year, we have had the opportunity to assist more than 2,700 Virginia Beach residents with disabilities, including helping four to move out of a nursing home into their own apartments to live on their own again. The consumers we've worked with this year have achieved more than 750 independent living goals and more is coming. Our services include one-on-one peer mentoring with staff like myself who have a disability, providing information on community-based services and resources, advocacy, and independent living skills. We provide these services one-on-one and in group settings. Next year, we hope to be able to increase and work with over 3,000 individuals with disabilities in Virginia Beach. We are asking for your consideration to restore a previous funding level. Over the last four years, our funding has been reduced by about 50 percent. We hope that you'll be able to consider restoring these funds so that we can continue to support and work with residents with disabilities in Virginia Beach and the disability community.
Thank you for coming down tonight. Thank you for watching all of you doing it in the commission or two. We welcome you tonight, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sessoms and members of the council. I'm Mary Mathena, and I am here to speak about the Independence Center in Norfolk, Virginia. I want to thank you for the support that you have given us in the past, and I hope that you will continue to support the Independence Center in the future. The Independence Center in Norfolk, Virginia is part of a network of 16 centers for independent living located throughout the state of Virginia. The Independence Center itself serves the south part of Hampton Roads, Virginia Beach, Norfolk, Portsmouth, Chesapeake, and parts of Isla White County. We provide services for people with disabilities, which include information and referral to other resources, advocacy, both individual and system advocacy, independent living skills training, and peer mentoring. It's always good to have a peer mentor when you're starting your journey toward greater independence. Also, the center provides some extra services such as social security work incentive programs and help in finding housing and housing policy, and also services to help people with disability waivers. When I started coming to the Independence Center, I had been blind for three years. I had been legally blind for most of my life, so I had good partial vision, and I was a traumatized person. I didn't know what I was going to do with the rest of my life, and I started attending a group there, and from there, I began to participate in more organizations that advocate for people with disabilities. The staff at the Independence Center made me feel like I was fully capable of living a independent life, and they have given me the courage and incentive to go back to work and seek further employment. The center also provides opportunities for people to participate fully. We have women's and men's support groups, and we also have a support group for people with disabilities. There are participant-led events where people go out into the community, and there is so much more, and I am really grateful to the staff for helping me to even think that I could live a more independent life.
Well, we certainly thank you for coming down tonight and speaking. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for coming down.
Very good.
Take your time. Take your time.
Are you Larry, sir?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
We welcome you today, sir.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Larry Daggett.
If you come a little bit closer, please.
There's a microphone.
There's a microphone right up here for you.
Can you hear me now?
A little closer.
There you go. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Larry Daggett, and I have been a member of the Independent Living Center of Norfolk ever since I was 16, so that's about 40 years. I just wanted to say to you that I appreciate everything you do for the center, and I hope you continue to support the center in the future. Ever since I was a little child, I've had a disability. I've never understood the importance of fighting for my disability until I came into the Independence. Now that I understand how important my disability is and my rights. Hold on, I'm getting nervous.
You're doing fine. Doing great.
I understand, and I hope to be able to teach other people the importance of their disability so they can be able to live independently, able to be able to work, and be able to understand that they have a choice and they have a chance to live independently. I implore you to continue the service, to keep supporting the Independence Center because we have a lot of groups, as my two friends just said. We have a support group to help other people understand the importance of their disability and their rights, and we have a mix and mingle as well, so other people can mingle with their, other people with disabilities. I thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down, and you did a great job. Thank you.
Martin Orange and Gabriel Whitmore.
We welcome you tonight. Nice to see you.
Mr. Mayor, members, good to see you all again. Sorry I come down here to complain about things, but I'm good to be here. Reality check. What Grinch decided that taking away the stipend to some retired people who had a little bit of help on their real estate taxes was a good idea to fund this budget? Reality check. Nobody here believes that 400,000 people in the city of Virginia Beach are willing to pay extra taxes so 2,000 people might ride a couple of miles. The last referendum, the last referendum was a ruse. I think everybody realizes that thing was advertised and everything else to confuse the heck out of everybody, and it did. And I think that's why the numbers changed the way they did. I don't believe it was a vote to build. Now, you folks are considering to building an arena. As you know from our previous appearances here, I am very fiscally conservative, and therefore, I probably am not greatly in favor of that, but I can understand the need. You've all seen pictures of arenas, and you've all seen pictures of arenas with buses lined up waiting to take people places. Well, you're never going to see our arena with any light rail cars lined up because you can't do it, and you can't afford to have enough light rail cars in reserve in case you wanted to do it. A bus would be the way to go. Finally, a reality check, this city has spent a fortune putting overhead wiring underground all over the city, wherever it could, and now you guys are talking about putting this unsightly wiring up to run at light rail, fully realizing that any damage to that thing puts the thing out of commission entirely, and it immediately begins to go to heck in the handbasket when you put it up and out-climb it. I don't think that's a great idea. I don't think we should create a fiscal liability requiring forever infusions of money. Instead, fix the streets, stop our neighborhoods from flooding, make traffic signals more responsive to the flow, but spend no more on light rail that can never move people more efficiently than the one thing we can do and have, and that's a bus. You can use that piece of property we bought as a bus. That moves people. That's what we want to do. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. We welcome you tonight.
Grant Reeves.
Thank you very much. My name is Gabriel Whitmore. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before this council.
Wait a minute, let's get your time set.
Okay.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you. I moved to Virginia Beach in 2003 because this city offered the promise of a better life and a better future. After living most of my life in New England, Oklahoma, Nevada, I chose Virginia Beach as my new home because of the city's nationwide reputation for stability, safety, security and of course excellent schools. When I bought my first house in Virginia Beach, the property tax rate was a dollar and two cents per hundred and it was worth every penny. Stability, safety, security and outstanding schools come with a price. I understand and appreciate why the property tax rate was lowered during the housing boom of the mid-2000s in order to provide tax relief to homeowners. That housing boom is gone. Home values while recovering are still significantly lower than they used to be. If Virginia Beach intends to appropriately fund city services, the Virginia Beach City Council must consider restoring the property tax rate to a sufficient level that police, firefighters, city workers and city educators, collectively the backbone of our community, can support their families with real raises. I cannot speak for police or firefighters, but I can speak on behalf of our schools, both as a parent and an educator. Teachers in Virginia Beach City Public Schools need raises. Real take-home pay, in-your-bank-account raises. The current base pay scale, which implies that teacher pay has increased since 2012, is deceptive and misleading. According to the salary scale, my base salary has gone up $4,595 since 2012. That's $191 per check, allegedly that I'm earning an additional salary. However, since that time, I'm also paying an additional $1.20 in dental, no big deal, an additional $49.44 per paycheck in my health insurance, an additional $86.47 in retirement, an additional $52.66 for paycheck in my social security payments. My $191.11 raise is offset by my $189.77 total additional deduction. In three years, I'm being paid $2.68 more per month than I was earning in 2012 and I'm certain that police, firefighters, city workers and all other educators in Virginia Beach share a similar story. I simply ask that this city council take any step necessary to support the people who support Virginia Beach. We have a strong reputation as a city. We want to keep the strong reputation of the city. Please protect the stability, safety, security and schools of Virginia Beach.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Jonathan Pope, next.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Sessoms, Vice Mayor Jones, City Council members and Mr. Spore. I am Trenae Soregs and as you know by now, I am the president of the Virginia Beach Education Association. And thank you for allowing me to speak again tonight as I did last week at the last budget hearing. I'm here this evening again with the same message. We must protect the quality and reputation of our schools and our city. How do we do this? The city council must take action and support, to me and to everyone else, a 5 percent raise for city and school employees. The school system has asked for $20.4 million to assist with their already budgeted 1.34% salary increase that includes coverage of the 1% employee contribution required by the VRS. And that leaves a mere .34%, which you know is going to be taken by taxes, increased healthcare costs and whatever else. This means that the school board is asking city council to assist with the remainder of 3.66% to make it a 5%. This bottom line amount will not restore the funding that Virginia Beach has lost since 2008. However, it is a step in the right direction. The loss of funding from the state has forced the city and the school board to make cuts. And the school system, that means increased class sizes for the past several years merely just to balance the budget. The effects are that our students have fewer opportunities to experience elective classes such as art, keyboarding, advanced classes and many more classes because of the cuts and personnel that it is needed to teach these courses. The same courses that helped to make the Virginia Beach school system one of the top in the nation, these are the courses that helped to ensure that our students are well-rounded and prepare them to be our city's and our nation's leaders. I know the public values our schools and our city resources and I know that you do too. The success of our schools and the high quality of life in Virginia Beach is made possible by the talent, experience and dedication of the people who serve our students and our city. It is critical that you invest in them now and compensate them for their dedication. The quality and reputation of our schools and city depend on you doing so. To keep from losing this talent and experience of our people in Virginia Beach, we must be competitive with the neighboring cities. Both the school board and yourselves as members of city council have made employee compensation a priority. This is why the additional funding requested by the school board and some of the additional revenue in the city manager's proposed budget focuses on raising all employee pay. Without this much-needed and deserved pay increase, how many of our talented and well-trained city and school employees will we lose?
Thank you very much for coming down. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jonathan Pope and Dan Heatwell. Jonathan Pope, please come forward when your second name is called.
We welcome you tonight.
Are you Jonathan Pope? Who are you? Is Jonathan Pope company here?
Is Jonathan Pope here? We'll call the next speaker, please.
Mr. Heatwell, go ahead. The next speaker will be Jesse Walsh.
We welcome you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager. My name is Daniel Heatwell. I'm a resident and businessman in Virginia Beach and I'm here tonight representing the CBDX, which is the Young Leaders Division of the Central Business District Association. And I'm here to urge you to invest in our city's future by including funding for the next steps of the light rail process in the upcoming city budget. As a young professional who has lived and worked in this city for the past 10 years, I see a city that has an opportunity to be world-class. We have fantastic schools, low crime rates and incredible outdoor amenities, but what we lack is the adequate public transportation infrastructure to connect the major destination points in our city and our region. If we want to attract the best and brightest young minds to choose Virginia Beach, then we need to offer the options that they are looking for. Each year, the CBDX gives a scholarship to Prince San High School students who are going to college. As part of our scholarship program, we ask the students if they plan to return to Virginia Beach after graduating. Unfortunately, far too often, the students tell us that while they'd love to return to the area, the jobs they are looking for just aren't here. In order to attract these jobs in the future, we need to invest in our city and offer the lifestyle choices that employers and young professionals are looking for. My generation does not view mass transit as an amenity or a luxury for a city, but as a necessity. And I ask that you be willing to invest in this necessity for our city. Additionally, I ask that you include funding for a multipurpose path adjacent to the light rail. If you look at how projects such as the Belt Line in Atlanta or the High Line in New York have spurred development and enabled pedestrian connectivity throughout those cities, it's just a no-brainer for us with our pedestrian-friendly lifestyle that we have here. This is our chance to begin to connect the city's strategic growth areas and bring that vision for our city's future to life. Now, the state has committed $155 million to this project and another $30 million in low-interest loans. That's $185 million that will not be available forever and will go to other localities if we do not act now. In 1999, we missed a golden opportunity when we chose not to partner with Norfolk on a regional mass transit system. If we had, that system would be up and running from EBMS to the oceanfront today and we'd be talking here about extensions to Naval Station Norfolk, the airport and here to the municipal center. Now we have the opportunity to correct that mistake. You all were elected to this council to lead and I urge you to be leaders for our city by investing in our future and investing in light rail. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jesse Welsh and Jeannie Evan.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening. My name is Jesse Welsh. I'm the vice president of the Central Business District Association's Young Professional Group, the CBDX. And I am also a member of our recently formed Light Rail Subcommittee. In addition to my work with the CBDX, I currently serve on the Young Professionals Board of the Museum of Contemporary Art and have volunteered my time and donated money to various other community-minded organizations throughout Hampton Roads. But most importantly, I have been born and raised in the city of Virginia Beach, a place I have called home these past 32 years. I'm here today in the interest of myself, my family and future generations of Virginia Beach natives who want to see this council vote to move forward with the necessary studies required to expand light rail into our fair city. Thus far, the light rail conversation has been unjustly cloaked and fear-mongering and has been framed as a threat of increased taxes. But for myself and many of Virginia Beach's future leaders, the expansion of light rail is viewed as an investment opportunity that will work in favor of the economic growth of our city and all of its residents. In 2013, a paper on urban studies, civil planning scholars Daniel Chapman of the University of California at Berkeley and Robert Nolan of Rutgers University used concrete numbers from existing metropolitan areas to make a case that the hidden economic value of public transit systems could be worth anywhere from $1.5 million to $1.8 billion a year, depending on the size of the city. To quote Chapman on the use of their results in a cost-to-benefit analysis, it would show a higher benefits-to-cost ratio for rail investments, particularly rail investments in large cities with existing transit networks. Their study also went on to detail a potential employment increase of 19% per square mile, a wage increase of $53 to $194 per worker per year and a gross metropolitan product increase of 1% to 2% in areas where public transit was expanded. Growth numbers like this make a small increase in taxes seem like a minor inconvenience to me. To make a long story short, putting down rails today will establish the groundwork for a prosperous Virginia Beach of tomorrow. I hope my words reassure the members of city council that the state, community and business leaders and a majority of your constituents are ready to stand in support of doing what is necessary to make light rail in Virginia Beach a reality. However, to those of you who may be planning to vote against light rail expansion or if you plan to no-vote this matter, due to your concerns over reelection, let me be clear. Politicians who are more concerned with maintaining their seats than they are with being the leaders we've elected them to be or who are continually short-sighted and narrow in their views should have no place in the democratic process. So please, vote yes on the budget, vote yes on light rail, vote yes for the future of Virginia Beach. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Jeannie Evans-Cox and Jessa Shaw.
We welcome you tonight, ma'am.
Good afternoon or good evening, Mayor Sessoms, Vice Mayor Jones, members of council. My name is Jeannie Evans-Cox and I'm the executive director of the Central Business District Association. I represent over 150 retailers, small business banks, investment counselors, attorneys and an array of small, medium and large businesses within the city of Virginia Beach, a majority of which are located at Town Center within the Pembroke Strategic Growth Area. I urge you to vote for this budget to include light rail funding. We've been preparing for this moment for years. You, the city council, placed that question on the ballot and the voters answered. Seek answers, study and move forward with the decision. We know that every single dollar spent on public transportation generates $4 in economic returns, money that comes right back here to the city, back to your constituents. Entire communities have been transformed by light rail to connect people, places and things. Many communities and governing bodies, just like you, hesitated, but you had the vision. You had the vision for safe water, to provide safe water for our community. You had the vision to invest in Town Center. You had the vision to build multi-mega educational, healthcare and sports facilities and you had the vision to invest in our oceanfront, to protect our natural resources for the continued enjoyment and pleasure of our citizens and our tourists. The untapped potential is enormous. The investment from the Commonwealth of Virginia is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. The time is now and I urge you to have the vision one more time. Take the next step to invest in our city's future. Thank you for all you do for the city of Virginia Beach.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Jesse Shaw and Bernal Saunders.
We welcome you tonight.
Mayor Sessoms, Vice Mayor Jones, honorable members of city council, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Josh Shulman and I'm the president of the CBDX, a young professionals organization based in Town Center and a division of the CBDA. I'm also a Virginia Beach resident, taxpayer, business owner and inventor. We're all here around the proverbial kitchen table to talk about the budget. It's something many families do on a weekly or monthly basis, get together, talk about bills, expenses, saving and investing for the future. Investing in the future is sometimes a hard thing to do, simply because you don't see the reward upfront. You know it's the right thing to do, but the payoff seems distant and at times uncertain. Without a disciplined investment approach, you leave yourself unprepared for the needs and challenges of the future. A decision not to fund the further consideration of extending light rail into Virginia Beach would be a failure to follow through on that discipline. As a member of a demographic that will be paying taxes and voting here for a long time and on behalf of the 82 members of the CBDX, the young leaders I represent, I urge you to hold firm on the commitment that was previously made in 2012 to explore bringing light rail to Virginia Beach. This is just the first and very many next steps forward. And I respect differences of opinion and I know we're all fair-minded people looking out for the best interests of the city at the end of the day. But if it's a question of simply saddling children with debt, many of you with kids and grandkids, I would encourage you to go ask them what they think about this issue. This is for them, it's not for you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Have a good night.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Bernal Saunders and John Malvin.
Could you repeat the other name?
I didn't hear Mr. Saunders' answer, so go ahead, Mr. Malvin.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Glad to be here, mayor, vice mayor, council members. My name is John Malvin. I'm co-chair of Envision Virginia Beach 2040 along with Gary McCollum. I'm here tonight to express my support for the extension of light rail of Virginia Beach. The committee was appointed by Mayor Sessoms in 2011. Thirteen-member committee spent 16 months leading the visioning initiatives. The committee received over 55 presentations from experts and leaders to understand where we are today and to identify and understand the trends that would impact the city in the future. Excuse me. The work resulted in the committee identifying four bold steps to realize the vision, one of which was transportation, focusing on multimodal means of connecting our neighborhoods across the city, region and beyond. Without implementation of a multimodal transportation system, Vision 2040 becomes dysfunctional. Bringing light rail system to Town Center isn't about today, it's about investing in the future and we desire our city and our citizens and future generations. I view this decision similar to the decision about Lake Bridge property in 1994. The council at the time saw a long-term value in making the decision and investing in the future and look what we have today and we're still not finished. The investment has increased the quality of life for all Virginia Beach citizens. Town Center's story is equally as impressive. Now it's time to act, help make the vision become a reality, making Virginia Beach the most livable coastal community in the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Nancy Drew.
We welcome you tonight, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Or queen.
There are reams, well, I should tell you my name, shouldn't I? I'm Nancy Drew, speaking as a private citizen. There are reams of numbers available on the budget and the components that it includes such as light rail and all of us can look for those if we want to do so. Unfortunately, when not read in their entirety, the very-
We welcome you tonight, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Or queen.
There are reams -- well, I should tell you my name, shouldn't I? I'm Jesse Griesch, speaking as a private citizen. There are reams of numbers available on the budget and the components that it includes, such as light rail, and all of us can look for those if we want to do so. Unfortunately, when not read in their entirety, the various pieces can create a very misunderstanding, a confused understanding and impression, which becomes taken as fact. Now, no one needs to review the numbers with you; I expect you all know them by heart. Suffice it to say that the reduced state funding and the mandated state requirements over the past five years have shifted more than ninety-one million dollars per year to be borne by the city. No one likes a tax increase. Likewise, no one wants reduced city services. We live in a community of values. We live in a city that has a school system second to none, a crime rate that's the lowest of any city our size in the country, and multiple recreational opportunities, but they cost money. And just as the cost of living has increased for each of us, private citizens, so too has it increased for the city. And how are you going to continue to provide all these amenities that we now take for I asked Patty Phillips, well, let me say this, it's financial management and good leadership that you provide and that our professionals provide. And so, I asked Patty Phillips, our finance director, if there was perhaps one fact that she could offer that would help me to make an impact, and her answer was, tell them how old you are. Right on the money, Patty, because that's the crux of the matter. I'm eighty-four years old, and I will probably never ride on the light rail from Town Center to Norfolk and back again, and I sure will never ride it from Town Center to the beach front. But that's precisely the point, because it isn't being built for me and probably not for a whole lot of other people that are in this room. You've heard it already, it's being built for the future. It's laying the foundation for where we have to go and the city we want to become, one that fifty-four percent of millennials say they'd like to live in, and ninety-one percent who believe that public transit is essential for jobs and economic growth. And you've heard that from some of the young people here who've spoken tonight. Read the actual monetary facts and ask yourself, with the most state funding and federal funding available to us that we have ever had in the past and may ever have again, can we afford not to move forward?
Thank you very much for coming down tonight. We appreciate your comments. Thank you. We welcome you tonight.
Chuck Mobus and Jack Bray.
Mr. Mayor, council members, fellow citizens. My name's Chuck Mobus. I've owned a small business in this pretty city for the past twenty-seven years. It's Mo's Music, and as a result, I've been sending my tax dollars to the city treasurer from my home and from my business, a normal situation. But in 2007, 2008, we all entered into an abnormal situation, and life in our area changed drastically with the beginning of the Great Recession. My business was impacted when moms began to lose their part-time jobs or when dads had their work hours cut or worse, got laid off. Our music student traffic slowed and diminished, and customers began to only purchase when prices were slashed to unsustainably low profit levels, if even then. I dare say the majority of the citizens who elected you folks were affected by the economy when everything tanked, and beach citizens had to improvise their financial lives in order for their families to survive. Over the past three or four years, some of your voters' economic circumstances have slowly begun to improve, as some of us have learned to negotiate what's called the new normal, but certainly not the majority of beach citizens. And about then, you elected employees of ours began what I call the great fee suction of the 2010s. In 2011 or so, we who have city garbage service began to happen to pay a ten-dollar fee for waste services. The next year, that fee more than doubled to a little over twenty dollars. Next, the city began to charge my business a fifty-dollar fee for our mandatory annual fire department inspection. After that, as I deal in used musical gear, I was required by my city's elected officials, that's you folks, to obtain a second-hand dealer's license for which you required a fee of fifty dollars. The next year, that license fee doubled to one hundred dollars. This year, that fee went up to one hundred fifteen dollars. And here you are again, hats in hand, asking for more tax dollars and fees so we can pay for light rail in your arena. This might not be so bad if the city of Virginia Beach were the only taxing authority in our lives, but it surely is not. I fear that most of you are severely out of touch with the realities of our fellow citizens' finances, and maybe that's to be expected when our city manager is compensated by our tax dollars at a higher rate of pay than the Secretary of State of the United States of America. I would be delighted if you would disprove the persistent rumors of light rail being a done deal amongst yourselves by having the decency and the integrity to propose a plainly and clearly worded referendum asking of us if that's how we want you to proceed with our tax dollars. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Jack Bray and Anthony Dimaselli.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Good to be here.
Thank you.
I want to thank you all for what you do. It's not easy when you have to deal with how many thousands of residents in Virginia Beach that are living here, and they each have problems. However, I want to address a couple of things to you. Does anybody have a calculator here that can tell, give me some figures? You guys are more informed than I, so what would you tell me, what is the budget right now to set out? What's the price of the budget?
Okay, we're here to listen to you.
Yeah, I know, but I want to ask you a question. I'm going to show you.
This isn't for questions. This is, we're listening.
Okay, very good. That's why I can't get any information from you, so that's good. I've got that information, but I wanted to just kind of confirm it with you. Here's the question. The budget, if you take the budget and you take the amount of money you're trying to raise, like your twenty million dollars or whatever that is, you know, twenty forty million, take that percentage, I think that comes out to about 1.5 percent, 1.5 percent. Now, that's 1.5 percent of that figure that you're trying to raise. Now, I just take my personal budget that I do every year as a business person and the business, and what I try to do every year is look at my budget and say, I want to reduce that by between five and twelve percent. That's my goal. I usually end up about eight percent. That's pretty good for my personal budget. I don't know how these people are doing, but I got a feeling they're working at that too. Now, my question is this, if the increase that you're trying to get is one percent, now, let me ask you something. I've just got a couple ideas. I was thinking, why don't you go back to each department and ask them, can you reduce your budgets by five percent? And we'll give you, we'll actually work up an incentive program to you, each department, into your budget, if you can reduce it by a certain amount, if you get above, let's just say two percent, if you get, we'll take two, but if you get up to five, we'll get an incentive back to your budget for doing that. And what this will do, each department, is it'll raise the money for the city of Virginia Beach, so they'll have more money than they want to pay for the raises for the school system, for the firemen, for the policemen, for light rail. Now, I think the gentleman, there's been several editorials about light rail, and I'm familiar with light rail because I'm on the border of Norfolk and Virginia Beach, but I'm in Virginia Beach. And I think we do all these statistics like a gentleman gave yesterday on light rail, we need to look at Norfolk. They're right here in our economic area. How are they doing? And if we modify that and take it, how does that affect Virginia Beach? We're only going from Norfolk to Pembroke. This isn't like we're going fifty miles here, okay? And I think the idea of what the ridership is going to be, that's important. Has a survey been done of residents of Virginia Beach and asked these residents, what is your likelihood that you'll ride this? Yes, ma'am? Yes, sir? Anybody? Has a survey been done? Can anybody tell me? I mean, if you get that information, see, I happen to have worked with this city of Virginia Beach and researched a few years back, and I enjoy doing that. And Biden saying doesn't mean anything, it shouldn't mean anything. But the point is this, you know, I think you can do this without raising taxes.
We thank you for coming down tonight, sir. Thank you.
I thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Anthony Dimaselli and David Bickford.
We welcome you tonight.
Hi, thank you for your time. A lot of important issues up here tonight, but mine's not that important. You might recognize my name, Anthony Dimaselli, from the emails I've sent to you all over the last two years about grass cutting. Been trying to get the grass cut at a more reasonable interval for a pretty long time now. Right now, the park grass in my neighborhood has not been cut yet, okay? There's soccer teams that have to cut little sections out to practice. It's really unsightly. It could go as long as twenty-one days. I've seen it. I've been tracking it, obviously. If it rains, then big clumps of grass are left out all over the place, kids can play. And I think it's a basic city service that needs to be, you know, being taken care of. I mean, the grass around here looks great. Could we get on the same schedule as that? I mean, where can you go? But I really appreciate it if you would consider it in the budget.
That is in the budget, just for your information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Allison Welsh.
We welcome you today.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is David Bickford. I'm a resident of Virginia Beach, live in Cypress Point area, and I'm a member of the CBDX, I'm a board member of the CBDX. And I used to live in Virginia, I used to live in Norfolk, so I'm a convert, so to speak.
You saw the white.
So, a lot of things that I didn't like in Norfolk were some of the ways that things just got kind of pushed through. And, you know, Norfolk really screwed something up about fifty years ago, and that was the opportunity to have an airport. We lost that opportunity, and if you look at the city that got that opportunity, that was Charlotte. And if you look at Charlotte now, as to what they look like fifty years ago, it is a thriving, incredible city, and it's got a ton of jobs. And that's why, that's a lot of what I've heard the opposition talk about, is the jobs factor. If you don't have the infrastructure, you're not going to get the jobs. That's the, and, look, I love this city. That's one of the reasons why I moved here from Norfolk. I think that's why we're all here. We all love this city, and it's an incredible place to be, and we have the opportunity to make it better. You know, going back in time, keeping with the history theme, about ten years ago, we were a city without a downtown. Couple of visionaries, a couple, the opposition is going to call them evil developers who, well, these evil developers came in and they created 1.8 million square feet of real estate at the Town Center of Virginia Beach, which previously could have been a Walmart parking lot, it could have been some sort of retail center, and you would have gotten zero tax dollars for it. But now you have 1.8 million taxable square feet that's paying our city, and I think you owe it to the Town Center of Virginia Beach to at least bring the rail to that place. I'm not saying bring it into everyone's backyard, bringing it, you know, even close to your backyard, but bring it to Town Center. I think the nine-hundred residents who are there would appreciate the ability to be able to get to Norfolk and be able to get back to Town Center. The Town Center has created six thousand jobs. That's one of our highest economic drivers. You ought to support that infrastructure that's already there. You know, the last thing I'd like to say before closing is that no one is remembered as City Council for saving taxes, saving the citizens' taxes. No one's ever said, oh, God, that was a great City Council, they saved me six cents on the dollar. But you could be remembered as a City Council who brought two cities together, and you could be remembered as the City Council who actually put light rail together. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Allison Welsh. Jane Brust. Rock St.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening. I am Allison Welsh, and I am the Sales and Marketing Manager for the Town Center of Virginia Beach, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak tonight. I would like to take this occasion to let you know of my support of the extension of light rail to Town Center. In addition to being the Sales and Marketing Manager of Town Center, I am a board member of the Central Business District Association, an executive board member of the CBDX, and, most importantly, a mother of two middle-school-aged boys who attend Kemp's Landing Magnet School in Virginia Beach. One of the many parts of my job is to communicate with the tenants of Town Center on a very regular basis. This would include the office tenants, stores, and restaurants located within Town Center. I am pleased to report that the tenants have expressed to me their overwhelming support and desire to see the extension of light rail to Town Center. The consensus that the light rail would be essential to our area for safe transportation and business growth, allowing for easy access to Town Center for patrons and visitors alike. As a mother and twenty-year resident and homeowner of the 23451 Oceanfront, I am also in support of the light rail extension. Separating myself from the business of Town Center, I can see that a regional transit system is imperative for the growth of our city and to the benefit for all of the municipalities. I want to see my two boys return to our beautiful city after college, flourish in business, start a family, and continue to build a better tomorrow in our area. I truly think that light rail will be what brings bigger business to our city and will broaden our tourism industry, in turn, providing a better future for our next generation. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate all the hard work that you do for the city of Virginia Beach.
Thank you for coming in.
Jane Brust.
We welcome you tonight.
Yeah, okay, my name is Brock, Brock Andrew, and I'd like to first state that I feel that there should be no tax raises for this light rail and for this sports arena. I think this time, with the economy the way it is, people just don't have the excess money to pay for it. I think it's something for the future we can talk about at a later date, but I think we got to get some things cleaned up here in the city. And first, I'd like to talk about the Public Employees Union. They come in here and they want more money. I go out in the community and I see nothing but, you know, unsafe properties in the commercial sector. I see gas lines with caps on them next to road services with no idiot posts in front of them. I see no handicap accesses. We got to clean the city up. And for one, speaking with the new FBI agent here in Norfolk, thank God he's come down here, he's talked about the public corruption here in the city. And Mr. Adams is looking into some of the people here with Town Bank, you know, the Dr. Atwaters, the William Sessions, and Paul Franks. And I think, you know, once we clean house and we get some people up here to run the city like it should and fix the roads, then we can start talking about light rail. But with everybody owning a car, it just doesn't make any sense. And I tell you, it's very hard to make the bills, the water bills, everything, and you want more money? And then we got the, we got the Public Employees Union coming up here, and they need more money. They need to learn to live with what they got at this time. We have an fluctuation of people coming in from other countries that are sucking all the programs from the schools and the hospitals. Stop spending our money, Mr. Sessions. And hopefully, the FBI agent, Mr. Jod Adams, will go ahead and start putting some of these people away into a jail. And let me let you know about Mr. Sportland. Everybody talks good about Mr. Sportland, but let's not forget Mr. James Spore, James Spore, over here, took a sign away from a lady who was protesting. He went out there and took a sign away. How do you feel about yourself? You know, you're really disappointing, you know? You're supposed to be a man. You don't go take a sign away from a lady who was protesting. You know, I can't even look at you, make me ill. Well, I tell you, people, you are the people that run everything, and if you allow these people to do what they want, then you're going to get higher taxes. But everybody needs to put the pressure on Jod Adams, the new FBI agent of Norfolk. He is looking into the cases, he's working with the ones with the Town Bank, and hopefully in the next few months, we'll see some people go to jail.
We really enjoy your comments.
And I hope to see you behind the federal bar, Sessions.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
James Sherlock and Nancy Craft.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Councilman, councilman, you do a great job on the council.
Thank you.
Uh, it's a councilman. I remember when you was a councilman.
Thank you.
And R.G. Moore, you know?
Yeah.
You put the chokehold on Oceana, and those pilots couldn't pull up, and those hotels, and the government come in, and they said, we're going to close Oceana down. And Councilman Sessoms, I remember you, I've been here. And I can say this to you, I really come down here because I'm a state employee retired. I don't make what the city employees make, and I was on Norfolk City, and I was on Chesapeake, and I was on Virginia Beach Sheriff's Department. I'll tell you what really upsets me most of all with Norfolk and Virginia Beach, both, is light rail. We want to vote for light rail. I want to vote. I vote every election. I remember when you was down there on Arrowhead, shaking hands. Oh, you had them all eating right. Oh, you had them all eaten right out of your hands, except me. But what I'm really upset about is the light rail, you know? Put it for a vote. And Mr. Spoor says, oh, we're going to raise taxes. Mr. Spoor, yeah, he's got three deputy city managers. Norfolk just added another city, assistant city manager, gives them four. And that city is going down, just like the mayor, Myra Oberdorff, said Norfolk's in deep trouble. She said that because of the welfare. But, you know, they, it's a good thing, welfare's a good thing, that people need the money in Norfolk. What I'm really upset, more upset about, is the three assistants that he's got. He's got three deputy assistant managers, I repeated that. But what I'm trying to tell you is, I voted for, I didn't vote for you, Mr. Sessions, I apologize. I did vote for you and Rosemary, Mr. Wood. I don't think I voted for you. And you two right there that are smiling, you're the best city councilmen we have ever had, Mr. Dial and Mr. Moss. You're very bad. And you're new, and you've got to come out to Kemp'sville, I live in Arrowhead, and look at the houses that's falling down. And the Coates people, they're not coming out. They can't do nothing. You need to come out and look at the houses that's falling down. I can't sell my house. I paid $25,000, and it's worth $150,000, according to your real estate assessment. Oh, come on now. If it, I can't sell it? It's no good to me, I live in it, you know? And what I'm saying to Mr. Spoor, you know, you got to cut the state, I mean, the city budget down by getting rid of some of the employees. There's policemen, firemen, schoolteachers, oh, schoolteachers, they need emergency raises, emergency. I just seen a firefighter today putting out a fire of a car in Mayfair Apartments.
We thank you for coming down.
Yeah, have a good day now.
Yes, good to see you. Next speaker, please. We welcome you tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm the mayor and city council members. I'm here because I am supportive of the proposed budget for the city of Virginia Beach. I've lived here for over 60 years, and I've watched the city grow, and I support the budget, I support the plans, the future plans, that with citizen input that the city council and the city has gone through over the last several years, and I think it's time to move ahead with our plans and start putting things into place. My concern tonight is transportation. It's been a major issue for the entire region and for our city, and continues to be so. And at this point, we do have money coming from the state to help us move forward with the light rail, with other transportation issues, and I think it's time to move forward with it. Now, I drive, I ride the light rail as much as I can, and it's not because it's quicker or easier or anything, it's because I can get there on time. And that's something that public transit has to offer for us in the future. A light rail to the beach eventually, but at least to Town Center will get us started on a regional transit that can get us not just around, just to Norfolk, to the city, will help our bus transit, we can get moving a lot faster, a lot easier. We have got to find a way to get around cars. They're going to be congested, our traffic is always going to be congested, and we need alternatives. We have people throughout the city that will never drive and can never drive. And I'm betting that many people in this room at some point in time will have a time when they will not be able to drive. And we need to treat all our citizens fairly and give everybody an opportunity for a good public transit. So please move ahead and let's move forward with public transportation.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please. We welcome you tonight.
Julie Gifford.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Julie Gifford, and I'm here solely as a resident of Virginia Beach who pays property on two homes here in this great city. I support this budget, and I support salary increases to city and school employees, the arena, and light rail. For regions with over a million residents like Hampton Roads, we rank 40th out of 43 in public transportation offerings. We need to improve our public transportation system. We rank third highest in automobile to population ratio in the U.S. It's my dream to have light rail connect from Virginia Beach to the tide, and then the planned expansion to Naval Station Norfolk, the airport, colleges, and universities, and eventually to Chesapeake and the peninsula. Many have come out here tonight to support light rail but decided not to speak. Will those of you who support light rail please stand? Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
May I ask, the Honorable, is James Sherlock here? He didn't answer the call.
I think he's getting up right now. We welcome you tonight, sir.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen of the city council, and City Manager Spoor, I, until about 10 minutes ago, I was going to say I'd learned a lot from every speaker tonight, but I, now I can't say every speaker. Mr. Spoor, I wouldn't have your job for your money. I wouldn't do it. But in any event, I am, been a long time resident of Virginia Beach, retired naval officer and retired from a science and engineering company. I, I also think we need to raise taxes in order to do, from my perspective, to do some things that just basically need to be done. I agree that we have to pay our people who, that work for the city, teachers, firemen, and people that work in the parks and everything else. And I don't know their pay scales, but if you do, and if it's necessary, then we should pay them. Pay the roads we need to, to improve, mitigate flooding, and do all the things that need to be done. I oppose the light rail because I just don't see the economic return on investment. It's just too few people benefiting from too big, not only an initial expense, but long-term expense. It just looks like, it just looks like a bad investment. And I'm not sure that the technology that is being planned is right, but I would encourage you to ask, if you haven't already, Frank Wagner, who knows more about transportation than anybody I know in the public sphere, Senator Wagner, and ask him. He knows a lot about such things. So those are my, those are my concerns. I just don't, I don't see it. But you can have the tax increase to use for a lot of these things these other folks have spoken about tonight, and I hope that, I mean, I'll pay it. I don't want people that can't afford it to pay it, and maybe we, you could structure it in a way that I could pay it, and some of the people on the lower scale don't have to. But that's, that's my thoughts on it. And the other is, is that I know some of you are going to have to, have a, recuse yourselves from some of this because of conflicts of interest, because of your things you do in your, in your business lives. I wonder, I don't know your parliamentary rules, but I hope you can somehow bifurcate this so that the rest of the budget can be voted on separately from the light rail piece, so that everybody who, have it, all of you vote on the things that you're able to vote on. But anyway, thank you. I wouldn't, like I said, I haven't stepped up to run for council, and I sure haven't been the city manager, but I appreciate your work. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
And Nancy Hess. Margaret McCabe, Nancy Hess. What is your name, ma'am?
I'm Margaret McCabe.
Thank you.
We welcome you tonight, ma'am.
We need to continue to plan and think for the future, as you all are doing, and has been stated very well tonight from many different facets. And as a long-term citizen of Virginia Beach, I would like to support the extension of the light rail in Virginia Beach. It will help us, as I, as many of us are aging, it will surely help us with transportation. And I thank you for your efforts so far.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Nancy Hess. Stephen Johnson.
Could you call the name, please?
Nancy Hess or Stephen Johnson?
Nancy Hess. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you.
Glad to have you, sir.
I'm here to give you all a break from talking about light rail. I'm here tonight, I'm here tonight to talk about our water fees. They say the only thing guaranteed in life is death and taxes. Well, here in Virginia Beach, we can add to that list. Death, taxes, and increasing water fees. This year, there's a proposal to increase a whole group of water fees by just over $200. On their own, the $200 may not seem like a lot, but you multiply this fee across an entire apartment complex project, the total cost can be prohibitive to the project. I work at an engineering firm here in Virginia Beach. We design various projects all over the city. And if we take this fee and we apply it to the last apartment complex we did, it adds a total of $58,000 to the project. Costs like that would cause us to downsize the project, something that we really don't want to do. The city is sending mixed messages. On one hand, the city is saying we want to discourage suburban growth, but we want to concentrate on new urban-style development. You're saying you no longer want single-family homes and nice, safe neighborhoods. You want high-density urban centers interconnected with light rail and other mass transit. But increasing these water cap fees by so much will only discourage this type of development. This year, Virginia Beach is considering a major investment in light rail, mass transit, with the intent to encourage high-density development. Increasing this water fee will be counterproductive to this goal. The economy of Virginia Beach is going to be facing several challenges in the future with the military downsizing and other private-sector companies leaving the area. Now is not the time to take money out of the economy by increasing water fees and other taxes. I encourage you to consider the impact of increasing this particular fee on the construction industry and the home builders here in Virginia Beach, and not to increase the fee. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Philip Russo and George Pilgrim.
We welcome you tonight, sir. Nice to have you.
Thank you. Mayor Sessions, Vice Mayor Gens, and members of the city council. My name is Philip Russo, and I'm a member, I'm a resident of the Fairfield section of Virginia Beach. I'd like to thank all of you for your service on city council. I'd like to speak tonight from the perspective of a regular light rail rider. From a personal standpoint, it's cheaper for me, based on the government allowable rate, to ride the light rail into Norfolk, especially when you consider the elimination of the parking fees. It is much more convenient than having to deal with parking decks, driving up those decks, the elevators down. While on the light rail, I can do work, prepare for meetings, make phone calls, things of that nature. And quite frankly, it was, today was a much nicer ride than the current patches of 264 or Ford. From a connectivity standpoint, which is the real key, you see many young adults riding the tide with laptops, obviously making their way to TCC or Norfolk State. It is facilitating education, and that's the way it pays for itself. When extended to ODU, it will bring many students to the school for academics, sporting events, and speakers. I saw a bicyclist today on the ride, on the tide, riding. He had his bicycle and a laptop. And I was thinking, if I was younger and living in the western part of the city, I'd probably enroll in TCC in classes in Norfolk, because it would be easier to get to the TCC campus in Norfolk than it would at the TCC campus here in Virginia Beach. In fact, I conducted a business transaction today at a bank in downtown Norfolk, because it was easier riding the tide than it was going into Town Center, which had a branch of that same bank. Much easier than dealing with the congestion of Town Center. No transportation system, or roads for that matter, directly pay for themselves. But you don't see Boston or San Francisco shutting down their systems. We have got to change with the times. We've got to connect our region now and the future. Thank you again for your service.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Yes, sir. Come on up.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
I think that we've got sound reasons for the council to start taxing owners of recreational motorboats. Proposed budget identifies more than $2 million, an increase from the current 1.6 million. To dredge the eastern branch of Lynn Haven River, Lynn Haven Inlet, and Rudy Inlets to provide navigable waterways for boats. This funding arrangement means that taxpayers of Virginia Beach will be committed to pay for dredging expenses to keep waterways navigable for the boat community of Virginia Beach. Actually, there's a parallel here with financial arrangement for waste collection a few years ago. Previously, waste collection expenses were paid from the general fund, though condo owners, whose taxes were going to the general fund, were excluded from the actual collection. Council has since corrected that inequity. It's been said that if fees or taxes are levied, the owners will move their boats elsewhere. Well, facts show otherwise. Look at the SSD arrangement with seven neighborhoods south of Lynn Haven Inlet. Those boat owners initiated a request to the city to dredge the coves leading to their slips, so they can keep their boats in place. And the residents are paying, those residents are paying for the dredging. Consider also the boats and marinas that are close to the owner's residence. If the boats are taxed and they move their boats, where would they go to? North Carolina? New River? Time on the road round trip would probably equal the time on the water, to the Elizabeth River. To hear the sights and sounds of working cranes, the sound of sand blasting and riveting on ships in dry docks. Or to find a marina on the eastern shore, Chesapeake Bay Bridge and Tunnel, one-way toll is $13. Or on the peninsula through the congested HRBT. An end to a pleasant fishing trip concludes with a stop-and-go congestion on the bridge tunnel. Field estimates indicate that 2% of the boat owners would move their boats from Virginia Beach. Now, a year ago, page 38 of the proposed budget's executive summary cited the need to establish a steady funding source for critical projects, such as dredging navigable waterways. Now, a year later, we're faced with a 25% increase in dredging costs to keep waterways navigable for boats. Obviously, a steady funding source should come from those benefiting from the dredging. As with waste collection, those who receive the benefit should be the ones to pay. Let the boat owners enjoy their pleasure boats, but not at the expense of those without access to the pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down tonight, sir.
Louis Gayton, Robin Gaver.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Mayor Sessions, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. My name is Louis Gayton, a resident and homeowner in Virginia Beach. The Virginia Beach Transit Study, including four routes, is not complete. I repeat, not complete. Only a preliminary cost estimate to extend light rail to Town Center is available. The estimated cost is $327 million for three-mile route, with expected average daily riders of 2,250 people. $155 million of state funding is not yet approved. I repeat, not yet approved. Is expected to come from a federal grant, of which there is $50 billion of requests from various states. Congress nominally approves only $1.5 to $2 billion of these requests annually. Where does that $155 million come in? In addition, federal funds for light rail projects, nominally covering 50% of project costs, have not been approved. Do not make Virginia Beach taxpayers take a financial risk, which could have great upscale costs at this time. The estimated annual Virginia Beach funding for public transportation, not including any construction costs, is expected to increase to $11 million with a light rail extension, an increase of $4.5 million, or a 70% increase over today's annual funding of $6.5 million for public transportation. With no complete Virginia Beach Transit Study and only preliminary construction costs, how can one approve light rail or any funding for it? I recommend no approval of light rail or light rail funding at this time, until the Virginia Beach Transit Study is complete and a more refined cost data is available. What is the hurry? Are we getting? Are we getting the horse before, the cart before the horse? The above data was obtained from the Virginia Beach Transportation and Transit Office. In summary, vote no for light rail and any associated funding at this time. Please do not, what previous city councils did, by including a solid waste collection fee in a water bill vice a tax, which is previously paid for by waste collection. That fee in my water bill was $9.96 in May 2013. Increased 99% to $19.66 in February of 2015. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please. Good luck for your night.
Good evening. My name is Robin Gayer, and I want to share a couple of observations. My first observation is I'm really glad not to be sitting in your seats. What a scary position to be in, but thank you all for everything that you do. I would like to share with you tonight, I think that there's something that you've noticed from being at these hearings. There's a lot of folks coming out that care a great deal, one way or the other, on both sides of light rail. There's a lot of folks that have personal interest because we're all going to be paying for it. And there's a lot of teachers, and there's a lot of city employees that are involved in our city. My wife's a schoolteacher in Virginia Beach as well. But I'm here to once again tell, try to give you the courage to hold your hands and vote yes for this. Light rail is something that we absolutely need for the future of Hampton Roads and Virginia Beach. We're counting on this to go through. And not only are we counting on it to go to Town Center, it would be really amazing if we could think to Rosemont Road or even the Oceanfront. When you get those bulldozers out there going, let them go a little bit more when they're out there running and see how far you can get it, because you're making the difference of this being a future Detroit or a future Denver, Austin, Charlotte, and all the great cities that people throw out as examples. The one thing they have in a commonality is they had the vision, leadership, and courage to put the proper infrastructure in place. Now, something you probably haven't heard of, and I don't expect you to have heard of it yet, is something called high-speed rail and profitable private high-speed rail. It's something I think you'll learn more about in days, weeks, and months to come, but it's going to feed into Norfolk one day. And when those riders get off, we better have an alternative to get them to the tourist destinations in our great city of Virginia Beach. Makes all the sense in the world to put down the proper infrastructure for the future. This pays dividends today. I ask that you include money for the pathway so that these nasty developers can build those developments that pay taxes, that can pay the teachers, that can pay firefighters. We know that density in development isn't a bad thing. It's a way to get more tax money for our city that's not coming out of the individual homeowners, which most of us here are. So once again, I encourage you to have leadership and stand together and vote for Virginia Beach now and for the future to support light rail and to support the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Deborah Grant. Deborah Grant and John Easton. Deborah Grant, John Easton.
Deborah Grant, doesn't say John Easton. Is this Deborah Grant coming? Yes, we got Deborah Grant's coming. We welcome you tonight, ma'am.
How are you?
Very good. Hope you are.
I'm great. Okay. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
City Council members. I'm Deborah Grant, as you all know, and I live at 5636 Dottington Court, Virginia Beach, Virginia. As a leader of the local Southampton Roads Chapter of Virginia Organizing, a local nonprofit, nonpartisan group that is committed to all things for the common good, for the community. I speak for the group in fully endorsing the proposed Virginia Beach City Council City Budget, which addresses the needs of our community to include the extension of the light rail to Town Center. This budget includes a vision for the community, safety, investment, and education, as well as concerns with economical growth, transit-oriented development, and sustainability for our city. As a public transportation writer, I know how important it is to have a strong regional transportation system. The current system is woefully and adequately for our region, ranks 40 out of 43 regions, with more than a million residents in transit offering. Please move forward with this vision for our future. This is a good next step to take it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for coming down. Thank you.
John Easton. Leslie Jones.
We welcome you tonight, sir. Good to see you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, good evening. My name's John Easton. I've lived in Virginia Beach since 1975, and I'm a resident of the Haygood Point neighborhood in the Bayside District. I'm an active volunteer in the city with, as a member of BB Cert, as a volunteer with the Project Lifesaver, as an election official, and for the last several years as president of my civic league. I'm here tonight to express opposition to the inclusion of spending for light rail in the 2015-2016 budget. Other alternatives really need to be fully explored before we start investing millions, millions of dollars in a fixed system. The light rail study has shown the rail line is built would provide a negligible reduction in highway traffic, and I would believe would be used by a relatively few number of people of the residents. There's no bona fide overall community need that justifies the enormous expense of constructing a fixed rail system from Newtown Road to Town Center or beyond. The entire project, no matter how well-promoted by special-interest groups, is really nothing more than a big expensive nice-to-have. Additionally, I'm opposed to any increase in the current real estate tax rate. We've heard many times that Virginia Beach at $0.93 per hundred is assessed value is the lowest tax rate in the region. That might be a good slogan on a bumper sticker, but it really doesn't mean anything. Do the math. Our tax rate may be the lowest, but our tax bill is one of the highest. If you apply tax rates to the median home assessments in each of the area cities, you'll find we're nearly at the highest point, second only to Chesapeake. Chesapeake's median home assessment is close to ours, but the tax rate is slightly higher. However, Chesapeake does not have the annual $260 solid waste collection fee that our residents are subject to. So relatively speaking, our taxes and fees combined put us at the high end of this region. You won't see that on a bumper sticker. It's time for the city and the schools to follow the lead of the households in the private sector and do some serious belt-tightening. We certainly do not need another $200 tax increase on top of this year's increase in assessments. So, in summary, I urge you to vote no on light rail and vote no on the tax increase.
Thank you for coming down.
Leslie Jones.
We welcome you tonight. You're welcome.
I've never spoken up on the dais, around here before.
You're doing good.
I did speak earlier at another meeting. City Council, Mayor Sessoms and Mr. Spoor, my name is Leslie Jones. I stand before you very concerned as a resident of Virginia Beach since 1961 and a voter since 1976. I do hope that you will listen to me and others like me. Our projected family property assessment has jumped almost $12,000 this time around. Now add $0.6 cents per hundred to the total bill, and it takes a big bite out of our fixed income budget. Upon the constantly rising stormwater and trash fees, it could mean a significant increase in our taxes owed to the city of Virginia Beach. Our family budget just cannot withstand this constant onslaught. Two cents of the recom, sorry. Two cents of the recommended increase will be put towards light rail, costing at least $100 million per mile, and the actual cost may rise according to the ongoing study. And that is an ongoing study. It's not set in stone right now. The referendum put before the voters was like asking people if they want ice cream without presenting the actual cost. Sure, ice cream is great, but at what price? Now we can find out that the, now we find out that the cost per scoop will be at least $1,000 each, and we will be getting two scoops. That is not reasonable. The cost is just too much to, for us to bear. Light rail is a 20th-century mode of transportation, and that will cost too much to build and maintain. I, the question I know you can't answer right now, but how can you include money for light rail when it hasn't been approved by the council? It should not be added to this year's fiscal budget, no tax for traffic fees. Alternatives? There are alternatives. Innovations such as Uber and Lyft have now provided a free-market 21st-century solution to our travel woes by connecting ride-sharing capabilities at each individual's fingertips. Other solutions will follow by clever and talented entrepreneurs that will not require government intervention. With the proposed 24 cents of increased, city workers and retirees will be getting an increase in their paychecks by, by force, while workers and fixed income, private workers and fixed income will have no recourse but to continue to tighten our belts. Please, City Council and manager, would you at least let us catch our financial breath? This subsequent recession has given the average taxpayer quite a beating, and this tax increase is just unnecessary at this time.
We thank you very much for coming down tonight, ma'am.
And a burden on a longtime resident like me.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Bill Christopher and Jeremy Johnson.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and Mr. Stiles, and Mr. Spoor. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity, and thank you for your leadership, regardless of what side that you fall on. This is a tough job that you have, and I'm grateful that you're there doing it. I love this city. I moved here 13 years ago, and I call Hampton Roads my home, and I do business, and I entertain, and I eat, and I raise a family, and I do all that throughout this entire region. And I've had the pleasure to work with some incredible mentors like Ray Taylor and Jim Oliver, and have spent the last six years studying light rail and high-speed rail and next-generation transportation infrastructure, to the point that I'm a little too far out sometimes and would wish we would jump straight to something next-generation like Hyperloop, but that's, I might be thinking a little bit too big for the next couple of decades. But until we can get to that point, we have an incredible opportunity in front of us. And having watched this process for the last decade, I think it's fair to presume that we had tacit understanding going into this with Norfolk, that to make it work, we'd have to build it out. That we know that 7.4 miles in any city wouldn't be a sustainable business model. We understand that this is designed to be that backbone, that network, that spine that connects the major urban cores and corridors. And then, then the car, the future of the cars and the bus feeder system and the walking and the biking, and that whole interconnected mobility solutions all play a part there. But we also know that this isn't about the developers. The development is gravy. The development is additional taxes, like good points that were made tonight that go to help offsetting the cost of teachers and so forth. I definitely want to support the bike path and the spending for the bus feeder system. Your strategic growth areas are designed around this. You've already got the vision for it. You're on the right path. I ask that you continue to have that courage and show us the leadership and help take the city and the region forward. Virginia Beach is going to be lauded for this vote. This is going to be a big deal. It'll have a ripple effect, not just throughout the region and state, but throughout the nation and potentially the globe. As some of you are hearing, we've got a future of high-speed rail coming at us, maybe quicker than what we expected, and we want them to be able to step off that beautiful train station and go to really anywhere that makes sense in this region. Thank you again for all your hard work, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you for coming down.
Jeremy Johnson. And Michael Bedell.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jeremy Caleb Johnson. I'm a native of Virginia Beach, a realtor, and a small-business owner. I think it is worth noting that the proposed budget reflects a lot of good news. We're a growing city, and so many, and we have so many options in front of us right now. I mean, how lucky are we? Our city often ranks highly on one national list or another as being among the safest, being wonderful for families, being a great place to retire, having amazing schools, beautiful beaches, or a wonderful place for business investment. And this budget proposal is a reflection of just how great this city truly is. I want to commend the city manager and members, past and present, of the City Council for the careful stewardship of Virginia Beach. Too often speakers at this very podium rail against City Council in an effort to score political points, and I think it's time that someone said something nice for a change. And so I say, I think y'all are doing a pretty good job. I do not dispute that there are people in the city who are hurting. I do not dispute that there are people whose voices are genuinely unheard. I do not dispute that we can and should do better. Yet it strikes me that we have an abundance of so-called first-class problems at our hands. While other cities in our nation are still economically stagnant, declaring bankruptcy, suffering from crippling water shortages, and are literally on fire, we're arguing over light rail, an arena, city services, an arts district, and how to pay for it all. Let's face it, the Virginia Beach economy is pretty good, and any number of cities across the nation, even some within our own corner of the state, would love to fight the battles we're fighting. They would love to be on a best-of list as often as we are. They would love to have top-ranked schools. And you know what? Their citizens would love to have our low real estate taxes, still low comparatively, even after the proposed increase. We're no longer a small backwater beach town. Nearly half a million people live within our city limits. Millions of tourists flock here from all over. I sell houses to people all the time who work in Norfolk and Chesapeake and demand to live in Virginia Beach. All in all, I think we, as a city, are doing a pretty good job. And yes, we can and should do better. And what's with, and that's what this budget is all about, doing better, growing, advancing, achieving. Again, I say to City Council, y'all are doing a pretty good job, and I don't know you actively strive to disappoint every one, even one citizen in the name of progress, but disappointment sometimes happens. If anyone in this room tonight or anywhere in Virginia Beach is truly displeased with how our City Council is leading us forward, I'll be standing outside with my business cards. I'd be happy to help you sell your house here in Virginia Beach and move it somewhere nice. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Michael Bedell.
Next speaker, please.
Michael Bedell and Dave Squire. Dane Squire.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, esteemed council members. My name is Michael Bedell, and I recently noticed when I received my real estate assessment for the city that it had increased this year by $12,000, which equates to a 9% increase of the overall value of my home, and I did not notice any increases in the previous two years. And I wonder if this coincidentally coincides with the increase that you want to make with the increase in the real estate tax. As a city employee with a very modest salary, I am a public school teacher. I teach financial management and economics. My annual salary, the increase is pale in comparison to such hikes as these. And for things like what? For things like light rail? I've heard numbers thrown around for the total cost of light rail possibly being our light rail and arena, possibly being upwards of $323 million for both combined projects. And I just don't see this as something that will be necessarily great for the economic growth of our area. The arena would only create low-skilled jobs that are not necessarily sustainable to the area if the idea even works out. The light rail, the only way I'm riding that thing is if I'm stranded in Norfolk with no car and somebody says I have to get to the 7-Eleven at Newtown Road, stat. Otherwise, I don't see myself riding that thing. I have to work a second job as a valet slash bellman for the very hotelier who is reaping millions of dollars in taxpayer money to redevelop the beach. I can't tutor kids after school. I have to tell them, I'm sorry, D'Angelo, I have to go to my second job. I can't afford to stay here and tutor you beyond my contract hours. This tax increase, if implemented at all, I think should have at least been done responsibly and gradually over the past few years so that Virginia Beach citizens could have kept up with this, instead of seeing a very hefty increase very quickly, and it should have been kept in line with city wage increases so that people could actually afford it. I called the guy that was listed, or the number that was listed, to contest the increase, and the guy talked in circles for about 20 minutes like he had a pre-written circular manuscript that started and ended at the same spot just for this exact question when it arose. He could not explain it understandably. the guy talked in circles for about 20 minutes like he had a pre-written circular manuscript that started and ended at the same spot just for this exact question when it arose. He could not explain it understandably, so I admitted defeat in the war of attrition and hung up the phone. And when I actually was able to contact the third party, which he did give me the number for, it went to the voicemail of somebody who worked for Town Bank, which I found interesting. I just don't think we can afford light rail and I know that you guys are going to waste the money on a light rail and arena, which I just don't feel is needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Tony Squires.
We welcome you today, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Council members, Mr. Spore, my name is Dave Squires. I'm in my 23rd year working for the city of Virginia Beach and my wife is proud to say that I'm 20th year teaching children in Virginia Beach. We and many of the people in this room have been the beneficiary of great services and frankly, a world-class education. Those outcomes, however, are not accidental. They are the product of caring professionals, professionals that protect our community and teach our children. I'm here today because I feel a duty to you and to the people I work with to express how strongly I feel about the opportunity we have to invest in our city by investing in its future, our employees. This investment is the clearest example of an investment that presents compounding interest. Supporting a raise greater than that already proposed will help with recruiting and retaining the high-quality workforce our citizens need and the workforce that is invested in and supported by the city and the people we serve. When factored in with inflation and mandatory contributions to VRS and the coming increases in healthcare, the current proposed raise does not beat inflation. Our earning power, in fact, does not increase. The raise you provide your employees should at least cover for inflation and provide them with greater earning power as we both move forward. Today, too many of your employees are working a second job. Some of them are working third jobs. Too many of them are commuting long distances because they can't afford to live here. It's not fair to compare us to workers in private industry because we don't sell a product in the open market. We don't raise the price of our services when demand is high. We offer services to all in need and frankly, we and you wouldn't have it any other way. Our work product directly impacts property values and the prosperity that this community enjoys and that we are all proud of. All we ask is that you provide the resources and support necessary to make us secure in the decision to see our job as a career and this as our community for a lifetime. The money you invest in your employees is money well spent. It's money spent immediately, back reinvested in this community, not in 10 years, every month. Nobody can ever pay the people I work with what they're worth and frankly, none of us took this job because we expected to get rich. We just hope that you will carefully consider providing us with the raise that is greater than what is currently proposed, support and fully fund tuition reimbursement so we can progress in our professions, support and fully fund compression adjustments, and please accept my appreciation for the tough job you do.
Thank you very much for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Diana Howard.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Pat Steele. I'm a 35-year resident of Virginia Beach and I'm here to encourage the budget allocation for light rail. I'm also representing the Hampton Roads Realtors Association in this position. The city of Virginia Beach has actually been considering this issue from way back in the 1980s and actually since 1987, our 3,200-member Hampton Roads Realtors have been in support of light rail. As an association, our standard position states that Hora recognizes that a balanced transportation system that effectively moves people and products throughout the Commonwealth is vital to the economy and a high quality of life for Virginians. We acknowledge that an effective light rail system, as with most public transportation systems, highway, bridge, towns, and et cetera, is not intended to be revenue-neutral, but represents an ongoing investment in our growing economy, in keeping our military and our government operations intact, and in providing the ability of our citizens to efficiently get from place to place in a cost-effective manner. Light rail is one of the most important components of an efficient transportation system in Hampton Roads. Creating an effective multi-model transportation system for Hampton Roads requires that each jurisdiction cooperates in this. It's like the work that will be required to address our region's recurring flooding issues. This requires our various municipalities to work together for the good of all of its citizens. In the context of this need for the regional cooperation in solving this complex issue in Hampton Roads, we encourage and support Virginia Beach in its efforts to extend the light rail system to the Virginia Beach Town Center as the next major step in developing a comprehensive, efficient, regional mass transit system. We also endorse the Constitution Drive alternative. By moving forward now, the city will be able to leverage the $155 million contribution from the Commonwealth of Virginia for light rail expansion and will position Virginia Beach as the leader in developing a long-term solution to transportation issues in Hampton Roads. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Tim McCarthy.
We welcome you tonight.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Diana Howard. This budget proposes investing in light rail before the study is even adjudicated. Over $30 million, $32 million set aside in the new multimodal transportation special revenue fund with automobile tax increases on our licenses of $2 million and real estate taxes, over $21 million, real estate taxes, I mean restaurant meal taxes, $2.5 million and $6.5 million from other sources. Investing is really the wrong word because there is no return on investment in light rail. This will cost us every year in cost overruns, operating costs, not to mention paying down the debt for building it. It will not reduce congestion and it will not even guarantee a return on economic development and the study even says that. Why should my real estate taxes have to be increased when you just raised my assessments or my automobile licensing increase to support this train wreck? Why should I pay for other people's options? I bet there are all these businesses that came here tonight, if you put the user tax on them, make it a light rail business tax, I wonder if they'd want to pay for it. Isn't it time that you listen to Councilman Moss and only fund payroll at 98%? Why fund unfilled positions for the whole year? Some positions have gone unfilled for over a year, some two years. So it seems to me you can do a little more cutting than just half a percent of employees. And why are we adding 13 and a half more employees to the city manager's office, increasing his office expenditures by 35%? Shouldn't the cuts start at the top? Why don't you put salary caps on these high-paying positions or cut back on car allowances, memberships and subscriptions? Why not place salary ranges on positions to prevent compression? Why not rethink the funding formulas on the tourist investment program, the agriculture reserve program, the open space program so that more of that revenue goes into the general fund to pay for our priority needs and not your wants? Just take light rail out of the budget and there is no need for a tax increase. Use some budgeting restraints and stop raising my taxes. I envision you not picking my pocket.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. We welcome you tonight, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Sessom. Vice Mayor Jones and members of the council, thank you for your patience and thank you for your leadership always. I'll begin with the end in mind and that's that I support this tax increase of six cents. I encourage you to support this tax increase as well of the six cents. I support our teachers and getting an increase and I also support your effort to invest in the infrastructure of our city, in the spine of the city, the east-west corridor by including light rail. And one of the main reasons that I think this is important is it, I think while we're a world-class city in so many ways, we have a second or third-rate public transportation system. And if we're world-class in so many areas like schools and libraries and recreation centers and even roads, I think we've really done a fine job with regard to that. I think we're making a mistake not to invest in public infrastructure and roadways and the rail line. I think this is great that we're having these forums. This is democracy at work. And I think it was also democracy at work when you decided to have a referendum in November of 2012. And just to remind you, but you wrote the referendum and the referendum said, do you vote yes or no on passing the ordinance, passing an ordinance in favor of the use of all reasonable efforts to support the financing and development of the tide light rail to Virginia Beach? And I think that's exactly what you're doing. And just to remind you, it doesn't happen too often, but the vote on that particular night, 65% of the people who could vote voted. That's a very high percentage, as all of you know. Of the 95 precincts that voted in Virginia Beach, 91 of the precincts voted in favor of that. In fact, the number of votes in favor of that was 116,000. That's more than either of the two presidential candidates got that night. So I think it's it's worth your while to consider that. I think we need to invest the two cents in the future. We have, as I said, world-class schools, libraries, public safety, and we we need new solutions in terms of the infrastructure of our city. So I strongly encourage you to vote for this. I think it's something that we've worked on for a very long time. The citizens have spoken in so many ways.
We thank you for coming down tonight, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
MC Merton and Barbara Powell.
MC, we welcome you tonight.
Thank you. Let me correct that. It's MC Mundon, not to confuse you.
We made the correction. We got it.
Thank you. Thanks for having me and I was City Council Mayor. A couple of comments that I'd like to make in coming to several of these meetings, I'm noticing that budget increase is 2.2% or yeah, 2.2% budget and it's like a 1.5% city growth. Family budgets, somewhere in the pieces of paper and big documents I went through, family budgets are decreasing by 2.7%, which make it very difficult for me to justify a six cents tax increase with with family budgets decreasing so much. And then you add the fees, which add additional non-budgeted fees that come into play with strange monthly bills that come around. I have three comments and three somewhat solutions. Light rail, I don't see that my folks on Shore Drive are going to benefit greatly from light rail in that they have to get someplace to get to light rail. What we really like are the bike paths that the city built. We'd like them to go a little bit further, like from Westminster to the Brock Center and then we'll pick up the bike trail again. The Lesnar Bridge has a bike trail. We also like the idea of the trolleys coming from the oceanfront all the way to Brock Center. We talked about Virginia Beach being a world-class center. That Brock Center has potential of being a national treasure to Virginia Beach for the bird watching, for the oyster rows, for the Lynn Haven Riverneal, for the Chesapeake Bay. And we need to get people there. They're not going to get leave the oceanfront and drive up there. They might get on a trolley and go up there. They might take a bike and go up there. And us on Shore, and those of us on Shore Drive would get on the trolley and come to Virginia Beach proper, which we only do maybe once during the summer if we absolutely have relatives down that want to see the oceanfront. So light rail is not really something that I see Shore Drive benefiting greatly from at this time. Your biggest expense are your city employees and the health insurance that they pay or the health care. I happen to know a little bit about that. I am a pharmacist. I do work in that field and the biggest part of the health care is generally the medications. Chesapeake, our neighbors to to the west there, have created their own PBM pharmacy budget, pharmacy management budget plan. And the PBM is saving them several millions of dollars now. That thing took off and it's really, really grown. What that does is it provides your city employees, your firefighters, everyone with a health care benefit that they don't get anywhere else. The third thing are the the fees, the stormwater fees. I just can't see those justified as an additional expense that we don't know exactly how much it's going to be or when it's going to come, except it's going to be several hundred dollars more to our water bill. So no to light rail, no to the six cents raise, yes to PBM and trolleys and bike paths and no to the water fee.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Barbara Powell and Bob Terrell.
We welcome you tonight, ma'am.
Mayor Sessom and City Council members and Barbara DeBarbara. As many of you know by now, my name is Barbara Heighton-Powell. I am a special ed teacher's assistant at Herman T. Elementary School and I am also the treasurer of the Virginia Beach Education Association and serve on the board of the Virginia Education Association. I am here today to encourage you to find the means so all school employees can receive a 5% pay increase for the 2015-2016 school year. This would allow all employees to take home a 4% increase as the other 1% is already going to VRS. When I last addressed this body, it was about the rising cost of health insurance. We all know how that turned out. My take-home pay has actually decreased since January as compared to 2014. This past January, I was finally fortunate enough to attend Lobby Day in Richmond. I told my story to Senator Jeffrey McWaters, including that I've been with the Virginia Beach school system for 22 years and make just under $22,000. He responded, you are practically a volunteer. Senator McWaters has a good point. I am not a volunteer, though. This is my profession and I love it. Every day is a new challenge. I'm constantly encouraging students to do their best and strive for success. Personally, I am barely squeaking by. Other education support professionals bring home less than me. This pay increase is most needed and well-deserved. Please show your appreciation and support of all Virginia Beach public school employees by approving the proposed 5% pay increase for the 2015-2016 school year.
Thank you for coming down.
I thank you for listening.
Bob Terrell and John Kutchin.
We welcome you tonight. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'm here tonight to tell you that I strongly oppose the six cent real estate tax increase and funding for light rail. The six cent raise amounts to 6.4% on the 93% base, on top of an average of 2.9% raise in assessments for a total of over 9%. At the same time, any commitment to fund light rail based on a 5% design study, I think is premature and irresponsible. On the city website, directly below the wording of the 2012 referendum is stated, and I quote, "If the rest rever, excuse me, if the referendum passes, a detailed study would continue and the city council would decide whether to approve construction and where the line should run." It also says, and I quote, "Construction would still depend on federal approval and funding." The referendum was to adopt all reasonable efforts to support the financing and development of light rail and was publicized prior to the vote as a study only. I think that reasonable efforts should include waiting for a 30% design, better cost estimates, federal approval and federal funds for construction before raising taxes, increasing debt and committing city funds for construction of railcars. Federal funding has not been approved. Another point to consider is that current LRT technology might soon be eclipsed by more advanced transportation systems and the city would be committed to a white elephant. The budget proposal states that it would raise the city debt limit per capita and fund LRT by, and I quote, "redirection of current dedications and through funding coming from the operating budget." In other words, by cutting other projects and programs. By eliminating the LRT, I think council could provide funding for necessary programs without the six cent increase. And also eliminating LRT would preclude the requirement to fund $2 to $7 million subsidies every year for its operation. There are further arguments, I think, against LRT included in the Virginia Beach Transportation Extension Study. The study states that LRT will not relieve congestion congestion and will even increase it at specific intersections and during construction. intersections and during construction. LRT would require up to six new bridges over major roads and intersections and affect the adjacent properties. The VBTS also noted that the required debt increase might put the city's good bond rating at risk. As a final note, whenever I discuss light rail in the proposed budget with people, the universal responses are, "We didn't vote to approve it, only to study it." So I would urge the council members to take the prudent decision to eliminate funding for light rail and the six cent.
Thank you for coming down tonight. Appreciate it. Next speaker, please.
John Cuthbert. And John Fenter.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, City Councilmen, City Councilwomen. My name is John Cusht, been a resident of Virginia Beach for about twenty-five years. Husband, father, business owner, small business owner. I can also state unequivocally that as of right now, I am not under investigation by any federal law enforcement agency. Unfortunately, you folks are. And I feel like it is absurd that we're talking about a three-hundred-million-dollar project while the feds have a flashlight down your throats. I can't imagine that you're contemplating this until the feds give you the all-clear on council's activities. I think that's the attitude most small businessmen have looking at the actions of the council. Now, if you wanted to take the advice of the Department of Defense that came out just last month, and Virginia Beach being designated as one of the hotspots that ISIS has targeted, I would be all in favor of any tax increase that protected our schools, churches, synagogues, and places of entertainment like the oceanfront with enhanced, very enhanced patrols. I'm talking about Israeli-level protection, patrolmen with fully-automatic weapons and machine pistols, recognizing the fact that Virginia Beach is home to a number of special SEAL teams, one of which, the current Obama administration was derelict in naming as the unit that took down Bin Laden. We are going to pay a price for that at some point in time. It's when, I'm not sure, but yes, we're going to pay that price. Should we be ready? Yes. When's the time to get ready? Right now. And I urge you to recognize that threat. Make the decision to act to prevent a truly horrendous attack on some of our very soft targets, and act with restraint, win our confidence back, because you've lost it.
Thank you very much for coming down. Next speaker, please.
John Fenter. And Bill Bailey.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
John Fenter, Bayside District, since nineteen eighty-nine. Are we having fun yet? I wouldn't want to be in your seats either, but since you went to such great measures to get there, I'm going to say it, it's all your fault. All right. It's been belabored here enough, I will simply say that I oppose the current budget and for the reasons that so many others have said, including the light rail, the arena. We all saw what happened the last time we tried to get a professional hockey team into Hampton Roads. I don't expect that would ever change. We have enough problems with the current state of services that you're required to provide or, and should be emphasizing first. And as already been stated here, police, fire, teaching, parks and recreation, roads, that's where the money should be focused. There have been numerous points made. There was one made about large cities that are not cutting back on their rail and transportation. I have an anecdote. In January, I took my two sons up to visit my parents, because my parents aren't going to be around very much longer, I'm pretty sure. We rode the Amtrak overnight from Newport News. There is an experience I will not try again. And once we got to South Station in Boston, and it was five degrees, and I looked at them and I said, "I told you to dress for this, and I told you how, so it's your own fault, you're cold." We then took the MBTA over to a stop near my brother's condo. How many people here have ever ridden the Green Line in Boston? All right, you know what I'm about to say, Hunter. This light rail system, and it is the one with the smallest cars in Boston, and it's unique, it's also the oldest, and it sure looked it. When we were riding the light rail, we had to stop and take a bus around because they had wire problems. I recognize the smell of an electrical fire when I smell it. The costs of maintenance on a rail system like that do nothing but go up as it ages. It will eat you alive. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Bill Bailey. And Loretta Scott. Bill Bailey, Loretta Scott.
Bill, we welcome you tonight.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, I'm William Bailey, president of Virginia Beach Firefighters. I spoke to you on Thursday about five percent pay raise for the employees. Certainly, they're well-deserving, make everybody proud, and I also talked to you about compression. Compression's been a longstanding problem. I ask you to consider what you can do to fix that. But the one thing I did plan to see this evening was every single person who came up here, whether they're pro-light rail, anti-light rail, or whatever, everybody asked for increased spending. Nobody said anything bad about the city of Virginia Beach and the things they're willing to give up. It's a city with four-hundred-and-fifty thousand people, three-hundred-and-fifty square miles. It takes a lot of money to run those schools, takes a lot of money to run this city. I'm not sure whether a tax increase is necessary. If it is, I would certainly support it. I look back at the history of real estate rates, when it was a dollar, dollar-twenty-two ten years ago, it was important that we funded the city. Today, if we're going to grow the city and invest in the city, it's going to take money. And I wouldn't want to be in your shoes either, but quite frankly, I think it's your responsibility to find a way to do it. So again, on behalf of the employees, I ask you to find a way to do compression, a way to give them a significant pay raise. Three percent certainly is not significant. But again, it's difficult. I understand that. There's some options before you, things you can add to the budget, things you can take out, fees. I'll always throw in the bill for EMS. That's always a great litmus test. But, in any case, I have to do that every year. I've done it for fifteen years, it's not going to stop now. But in any case, I really appreciate what you do, and I wouldn't want to be in your shoes, but even do consideration, because the employees deserve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Loretta Scott. And Joseph Marazzo.
We welcome you tonight.
Mr. Mayor and the city council members, my name is Loretta Scott. I live on Crow's Nets Court, Virginia Beach, Virginia. I am speaking to you tonight because I support bringing light rail to town center and support the funding necessary to allow for extension of the tide. I am one of the many residents of this beautiful city that rely on public transportation to get around, and I know how unfortunate that is. Please keep in mind that I'm just one senior and people among many that is struggling with the hardship of trying to use public transportation to get around our beautiful city. Money that cannot be used for other things has already been promised by the state to help us make the best of our dollars during this budget cycle. So please, don't pass this opportunity up. This budget also includes an investment in a strong feeder bus system which is long overdue. Please pass this budget as proposed. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Joseph Marazzo. And thank goodness.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Mayor Sessoms, honorable members of the council. My name is Joseph Marazzo. I live near the Virginia Beach campus of Tide Water Community College. I work in the Emergency Planning and Response Office of the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health, and on any given week, I volunteer six to twenty hours to numerous volunteer organizations within Virginia Beach. My primary means of transportation is the Hampton Roads Transit Bus. Secondary means are my feet. If I can't get around on the bus or my feet, I simply don't go. Now, there have been a number of people who have complained on either side of the issue. Granted, it is a large expenditure of funds, and being fiscally conservative, anytime someone talks about increasing budgets, I get nervous. But as a person who relies on public transportation, I support the expansion of the light rail and the subsequent bus expansion. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
C.U.V.I.E.S.S. William Nader. William Nader.
William Nader.
Eric Olson.
Eric Olson. We welcome you.
Good evening. I'm here to speak in opposition to light rail. Expanding light rail to town center serves a very, very small portion of the city of Virginia Beach. People along Shore Drive, the people down here by the courthouse, will see very little value in the system. Building it to town center will put pressure on the current city government and future city governments to expand the light rail through to the beach. Current estimates from your own board is that the cost from town center to the beach is approximately one billion dollars without any guarantee of any state or federal support. Ridership of light rail across the country pays approximately twenty percent of the operation cost of light rail. So in the future, Virginia Beach would have to heavily subsidize every rider, up to eighty cents on the dollar. The current proposed route mirrors our two largest transportation networks in the city, Two-Sixty-Four and Virginia Beach Boulevard, and will do very little to affect the traffic and will probably make it worse going north and south, which is very restrictive. As previous speakers said, there's going to be very few overpasses. Most of it's going to be at street level if you go to the beach. It's going to further restrict traffic going north and south, and it's going to funnel it into those few roads that are going to have overpasses. The speakers who have talked about expanding it to Oceana and to the airport don't understand that you do not own any right-of-way to those areas. So the cost is going to be very substantial and may include the use of eminent domain, which is going to be very, very unpopular to the people along that route. And while you have full authority to vote for light rail and to approve light rail to town center, with a huge expense, potential expense, current and future, I would strongly recommend that you put back to the vote to the people with the public health. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker, please.
Wallace Harrison.
We welcome you tonight.
Those opposed to the pursuit of light rail in Virginia Beach are correct, that the projected costs are high, and that it will mandate increased taxes for most of us. Nevertheless, I'm here to support the wave for the tide of the future. Light rail ridership may never be a profitable endeavor, which may mean long-term subsidizing through a variety of taxation. But public transportation programs should not be required to make a profit or break even. Our public libraries bring joy to most of our citizens, from adolescent to the aged, whether rich or poor. They serve our inquiring minds and make some of us proud that our taxes subsidize them. Our modernized, tax-subsidized recreation centers provide affordable body and mind-building exercise to all of our citizens regardless of ethnicity or financial status. In spite of what our previous state legislators did to the area, we don't choose to erect toll booths on our city streets and bridges. No, we ensure that most of the costs of building and maintaining our avenues and freeways are provided by those of us who are lucky enough to be taxpayers, meaning that we are fortunate enough to have jobs or other sources of income. My twin teenagers are just completing twelve years of excellent public schooling and are now choosing between several prestigious colleges. Their public schools were nonprofit, tax-supported institutions that served the rich and poor of all creeds and colors. I do not enjoy paying taxes, but I do enjoy the use of many government services that they provide. Government of, by, and for the people is a means of doing things collectively for the people, all of the people, that many cannot afford individually. I personally believe the beach light rail will not reach its full potential of ridership and income and value until it can take Norfolk residents and tourists, not just the town center, but all the way to our convention center and the beach and back, and possibly to Hilltop and our numerous other attractions, and carry beach residents to Tide Ball Games, the Chrysler Hall and Museum, and other Norfolk attractions and back. Then I believe it will ultimately serve its purpose of alleviating some of our east-west traffic gridlock and make our Hampton Roads area residents, employees, and businesses ...
Thank you very much for coming down tonight, sir. Thank you for coming. Next speaker, please. We welcome you tonight.
Thank you, thank you. Hello. Hi. In the proposed budget, under new budget reality, we will read, "Our population exploded in the nineteen-seventies and eighties, but its growth is almost flat today. Yet demand for services measured by things like police and fire, library circulation, family support cases, and more keeps growing. In fact, the demand for services is growing over seventy percent faster than the population." However, I don't hear about it, about a demand for increased number of services, but instead, what I do hear is a demand for the upkeep of the services for which government is responsible, education, public safety, infrastructure, along with a few others. And so we also have what's called a TIP, T-I-P. This tourist investment program provides not only police and fire, but also entertainment while, all the while taking business from our local Virginia Beach businesses who are not subsidized by the taxpayer. It's one thing to put up with or embrace tourists during the summer. It's another to have our hard-earned money taken from us to provide for their stay. We are Virginia Beach with the most precious gift provided from God, the Atlantic Ocean. Do we really need a TIP fund for which the citizens who live in Virginia Beach are taxed twelve months a year to lure the tourists here? This investment program fund, which includes taxes on cigarettes, amusement, participatory sports, hotels, and meals. The budget also includes an additional one dollar per night, per hotel tax, which includes a sunset provision after five years to help fund for this infrastructure. So the next time you go bowling, or you play golf, or you have dinner at your favorite restaurant, anywhere in the city, just remember when you see that big tax, the third highest tax in the nation, it's all for the tourists. Additionally, when's the last time we've ever heard of a tax sunsetting or going away? And never forget, mandates, license, and fees are all from your money. Further in the ... Further in the budget, we will read, "We have been talking about light rail for 30 years. A common joke within technology information businesses is, 'If your computer becomes obsolete while on hold, press 3 for sales.' Well, if your light rail becomes obsolete while tearing up your city to build it, press 2 for too late.'" Six votes, that's what it takes to make a difference in Virginia Beach. Last count, there were 508 taxes and fees in Virginia Beach.
Thank you very much for coming down tonight, ma'am. We thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Waverly Woods.
Welcome, Waverly, we welcome you tonight.
Long night?
Yeah.
Is that what you did when you went back there? Got a little cap off?
That's what I needed.
You're singing to the choir. Again, my name is Waverly Woods, and nice to see you all again. I am the chair of the Hampton Roads Tea Party. And I'd like to inform you, what the citizens really need is higher-paying jobs and a proper education, not service jobs strapped with debt. They need to know that their families and homes are safe because our first responders have all that they need to protect them while risking their own lives. Meanwhile, the developers, special interest groups, and lobbyists profit from the waste of our resources by your decisions. Thinking only of tourism, let me regale you with the story of a sequel of The National Lampoon's Family Vacation, starring none other than the Griswells. Imagine Chevy Chase bringing his family here to see this beautiful city, piling his children, luggage, coolers, beach paraphernalia, all into the car to park at Newtown Road, then just to catch light rail and pile all of that paraphernalia into light rail to ride it to the oceanfront on an adventure of their life that I'm sure they'll never forget. Once they arrive, they'll depart light rail to a sidewalk, where they then take their paraphernalia, luggage, and children, and walk to the hotel where they have their reservations, only to find that Dad has left something in the car. It just doesn't get any better. And that could be another movie, Dad going back to get what he left. Now, our message is, stop wasting our tax dollars. Live within your means, just like everyone else out here has to. We have to clinch our budgets, we have to cut coupons, and we don't see any of that happening here with City Council. What we see is remodeling of hotels, the very one on your light rail book. We see that this boondoggle has a tip on it till 2030. We need to be spending our tax dollars on our priorities, which is our roads, our first responders, our educators, not wasting it with your developers who profit off of our losses. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker. We welcome you tonight, sir.
Hopefully, I'll be the last one you can welcome tonight. Let me say greetings to all of you, and we appreciate your service, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members. I am a 24-year resident of Bayside District. I originally came here from Washington, DC, after living in St. Louis, after living in Tacoma, Washington, after being born and raised in New York, and living in Boston. And I'm also a member of the African-American Political Action Council, and we fully throw it, support light rail extension. It should be remembered that when the plan was initially presented back when, and when 43% of the folks in G.P. voted for it, it really was talking about a regional program that went from Williamsburg to Chesapeake, and from Suffolk to Virginia Beach. That dream is still alive. In fact, more alive now, never, because regions compete with regions. And this is a millennial decision you're about to make, don't mind the double entendre. But we are two contracts, two carriers in a submarine, away from a recession in Hampton Roads right now. Dr. Cook's report, not mine. And with that, we have the diversified economy, and the largest city in Virginia has to be part of the leadership of that diversification. I have to tell you that little story. When I was a kid in New York, I was in the third grade, lived at the Amsterdam Projects Public Housing. And when our teacher wanted to take us to the Museum of Natural History, she piled us all up, walked us down to the subway stop, we all had our bus passes. Actually, with third grade, you got to call the MTA and you kind of go through it, a free entry. And we rode that subway up to 81st Street, got a chance to see the dinosaurs and the Hope Diamond, and every once in a while, the Hayden Planetarium. Today, the students at Pointeview High School, Pointeview Elementary, in Arrowhead, can walk, presuming they have a sidewalk, can walk to the light rail station and go downtown to the most modern library on the East Coast, if not in the United States, through the battens, wonderful gift, the Slover. But a kid at Princeton High School can't do that. They'd have to take a car. A young man or a young woman that lives in Argona, they want to go to work at the beach, would take three buses, and would never get there on time. A person down at Tidewater Community College can't get there. We have to make this decision. I know it's tough, but it was cheaper before, and it ain't going to get any cheaper, and we're going to have to be able to be, have the infrastructure to be world-class. I know you'll make the right decision, and I thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you for coming down tonight. We welcome you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Steve Stanley. I am a 65-year resident of Virginia Beach, excuse me. I live at 143 Custodian Drive, right by Town Center, and also a small business owner in Virginia Beach. I hope that as decision-makers for our city, you'll take into consideration or account for starters the fact that you will lose $155 million, that's committed state funding, which effectively will cover up to 50% of the tied extension project, that total cost, and $20 million that was granted to us by the state to purchase the Norfolk Southern right-of-way. That will have to be paid back if we don't invest in light rail, which, by the way, is the first step to including Virginia Beach in moving forward. On a system of public transit that's just so vital to our region, we won't see this money again for a very long time, maybe never, it's hard to tell. If you decide to throw my tax dollars away, ladies and gentlemen, I will remember that when it comes time to go to the polls. I support this budget, which honors the future of Virginia Beach by investing in city service workers, like our teachers, as well as investing in transit-based development, which begins with extending the tide to Town Center. I urge you to take a step, the right step, and move forward on this agenda. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Next speaker.
Your Honor, it's the last speaker.
Ladies and gentlemen, we thank you all for being here tonight, and it was a long night, but everyone got their opportunity to speak, and we thank you for being here. We'll adjourn.[1712.83]